Good evening. The board has now returned from closed session and will begin the regular session of the Keys Elementary School Board of Trustees meeting. 4.1, report our closed session items. We have nothing to report out. 4.2, approval amendment of agenda. We have two updates. Item 10.17 and 10.18. 10.17 is approval of summer school rate of pay. And 10.18 is approval of 2021-22 food service with TUSD. Anything else from the board?
Uh, no additions, no.
Do we have a motion to approve those two updates?
On motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 5.1, flag salute by Mr. Green.
Ready to drive?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. ，请你向董事会汇报一下关于 trustees的意见。我们有东西吗？Dana? Alright, moving on to announcements. It's nice to have announcements back. 7.1 is TK through 7th grade summer school is already going on June 3rd through June 30th on the Keys Campus. If you see the kids, you'll know they're in summer school. 7.2, first day of staff return for the 2021-22 school year is August 9th. First day student return for the 2021-22 school year is August 11th, and that will be a minimum day. Moving on to staff reports. 8.1, we've read the staff reports. Any questions or concerns?
Good.
They were pretty light because it was summer. 8.2, retirement of recognition of retirees. Mr. Brazil?
Alright. I'm gonna move over to the podium. Good evening. First of all, tonight I want to thank individuals who are here this evening who are going to be recognized for an amazing quality of work and their years of efforts as they serve the students of this district in both our traditional district as well as our charter district. And one of the things that I truly believe and I know that the board does, it does not matter what position anyone holds in the district. We all hold positions that are needed, required, and that support kids. And I know that here tonight, there are definitely three individuals who have done beyond that, and I'll say a little from each as they come up. But I also want to just say that we had some employees this year that are actually just saying farewell to us. They have, for personal reasons or family reasons, actually relocated and are leaving us. And I really want to thank Nicole Adams for her six years of service to the charter. Certainly, we are going to miss her dearly. I was able to speak with her yesterday as well as Mr. Emmons, and she's going to be missed. And we also have Cory Dahlstrom, who is a KES 3rd grade teacher who's been here for five years. An amazing teacher, someone who we really are going to miss as well, and kids are going to miss. And again, moving out of state, and so we wish her our best. And then Marie Garcia Tharp, who is a KTL charter custodian and paraprofessional who is also moving out of state. And we have had her working for us for seven years. So those individuals are going to be missed. Tonight, I also want to say that Marlene James is our KES paraprofessional. She has served the district for 23 years, and she's not here tonight, but we, I have certainly spoken with her as well. And we thank her for her service to students and to the district. Someone who is a very big part of this community and remains a part of it. And so we wish her the best in her retirement. Next, we have Della Pratt, who is here today, and I'm gonna ask Della to come on up. Della has been the head baker, and no one makes better buns than she. She is an amazing individual who even through the pandemic came in, worked tirelessly to support kids and to make sure that we had things going. But one of the biggest traditions was really all of the support she did for the Thanksgiving, the turkey and rice dinner with those fresh buns. She gave of herself and of her time, and so we want to thank her for that and wish her an absolutely wonderful retirement in spending time with your family and friends and enjoying it. And don't look back one day. I wish you absolutely goodness. We have a little momentum up to show you or to share with you of our appreciation for all you do. Thank you, Della. Next, I want to go ahead and recognize Gracie Rosales, who is our KES health aide. And Gracie retired after 15 years of service. She's not able to be with us here today as well. But she has also shared that her appreciation for having the ability to work with the students. But we truly know what a difference she made, and I think kids miss her, and she was a staple in that office. She knew everyone, I think, in the community and is someone who is very much missed, and we wish her all the best as she retires. Next, we have a gentleman who has served the district for 13 years, both as a classroom teacher and also as a principal, and that's Mr. John Stewart. If I could have him come up. John is someone who has tirelessly given to his students and to his staff at Spratling. I think he will miss us, but I have shared with him that he is always welcome to come back. And I know that he's already planned some activities and things that he's going to continue to spend time with kids. Truly loves kids, wants what's best for them, and we are going to miss him. But I hope he will take time, enjoy his family. He's got little ones. And so I just, I want to thank you for the ability to lead Spratling and also for the opportunity to having worked with you. I've appreciated and your honesty and your candidness, so thank you. We have a little.
To be absolutely truthful, I had to leave here when I began teaching because there wasn't really an opportunity in this district for me to be an admin person. So I had to go to Newman, and in the interview, I told them that, you know, I will retire from your district unless Spratling Middle School opens up, and then I'm going to apply that position. This is where I wanted to be. This is where I wanted to end up. So thank you guys, and thank you, Mr. Brazil, for making that dream for me come true. Thanks.
Thank you.
And last person, I would, and certainly not least, but we have a person who has spent nine years giving to a very important part of this district, which is, I believe, an opportunity that some kids absolutely need, and they can't find in a traditional district. And that is Mr. Rusty Wen as the KTL charter director. He has served for nine years. He absolutely loves the charter. He is dedicated to his staff, to his kids, and to parents. And I too want to thank him for all of his hard work. It was wonderful to see the celebrations of graduation where students also recognized him and wanted to thank him for all that he has meant in their lives. And so that was an absolutely wonderful and heartwarming opportunity to witness that. But I too want to say thank you for the opportunity to work with you. I think you are an incredible person, and I too know that you, like John. I'm just jealous because I want to be able to come to work where I want to go or to do things where I want to go, and I can't do that. So enjoy your family, your friends, and live life. So thank you for all your hard work.
I just want to say thank you to the board. Thank you, L U, for your support. And Jeff, you remember my name now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We hired Rusty, and I did not know his name, so I said, "What's his name? Come on down."
What's his name, but that's fun.
I was set up by the people before me.
But that made it fun.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the relationships that have been developed with the board and the support you've given to the charter school as well. And I know Jill will do a fine job, and thank you again.
I do want to add about Della, which she don't like people talking about her, but Jeff Green and I remember the lunch ladies when we were kids, and Della lived up to their expectations. You always took care of the kids. It wasn't a job to you, and I know you snuck plenty of cheese sandwiches to my daughter because she didn't like what was served. And you always put the kids first, even through COVID, you're always here working. And it says a lot, and I appreciate it.
And on her last day, she sent me a bag of my favorite crackers. She didn't forget. I appreciate it.
And John and Rusty, we've already had our words, and I appreciate everything you've done for us. The one thing that's unique with this district is it's always, we always try to have kids first, and if you don't put kids first, like, you just really don't stay. And you guys have stayed, and John, I know when you were a teacher and you said you were gonna come back, you had a chance to come back a little earlier, and you weren't ready. You wanted to be a ready principal, and you chose to wait, which, Matt, you might have lost the job opportunity, but it all worked out in our favor. So we appreciate that. But again, Della, when your partner in crime left, that was pretty hard on my daughter, but this is gonna be worse.
Hey, guys, I just want to say thank you very much for your dedication to the kids, all of you. It really, you've made your mark, and you made a difference, and you guys will all be missed. Thank you.
You are staying until the end, or are you leaving early? That's what I was hoping, because I had mine for the closing.
Sorry.
Well, so Della, you have to stay, is what he said.
Right.
Because he's writing notes. Alright, alright. Thank you all for coming. Moving on to consent agenda items. Actions prepared for consent calendar are consistent with adopted and approved policies of the district and are deemed routine in nature. They will be acted upon in one motion without discussion unless members of the board request that an item be removed from the consent calendar. In that event, it will be taken up in the order indicated on the main agenda. So it's items 9 through 1. Yes, Rusty didn't get your memo. 9.1 through 9.6. Any questions or concerns? Alright. Do we have a motion to approve, all?
On motion.
We have a first?
I'll second it.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to action items. 10.1, approval of certified classified confidential management personnel actions. And I could not find this in my binder. I had to wait for Dana to show me where it was at, where it's supposed to be. I'll admit my flaws. I got her all worried that she messed up, though, but any questions or concerns? I couldn't find it. It just wasn't there. She put it in when I wasn't looking.
She hid it from you.
Any questions or concerns? Alright, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.2, approval of Coachman Data Services 2021-22 contract. Mr. Brazil?
Yes, this is a contract with Ms. Carol Couchment or Couchment Data Services, and it is for her work on preparing our Cowpads reports and doing all of our reporting to the state required reporting system. So our recommendation is that the board approve the contract for the 21-22 school year.
Alright, any questions or concerns? I had some concerns. I already dealt with Mr. Brazil on those, and got those all resolved. A motion to approve?
On motion.
A motion to approve? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.3, public hearing, starting at 6:19 for the 2021-22 KUSD and KTL budget overview to parents and the local control plan, LCAP.
Yes, so we have submitted the draft plan, and it's available for comment and for review here today as well. We sent it out to all staff. We've sent it to the county office, where they have read it, made some changes and suggestions, and sent it back. And we've returned that as well, and so it will then be back before the board for formal adoption on the 22nd of June. Must have a public hearing first and then wait at least five days before you can have a final approval. So that's what we're asking the board today here is obviously to engage any member of the public who wishes to make a comment.
Ms. Morse, you have to add? No? Alright. Any questions or concerns? Nothing from the public? We will close this at 6:20? Moving on to public hearing of the budget adoption for the 2021-22 school year. Ms. Morse?
Good evening. I am here to present the budget for 2021-22. If you'll open your packets and turn to page 2. So the theme this year was what a difference a year makes. 12 months ago, we were facing a 10% budget cut with no COLA. For this budget, we are now presenting a mega COLA, which we'll talk about later, and record-breaking one-time funding from state and federal sources. And this is all due to, mostly due to COVID. So where we had zero COLA funded last year, we now have a COLA of 5.07%, which is the largest COLA we've had in quite some time. Please remember that the things we're going to talk about and discuss tonight, these are all in the governor's proposed budget. The actual state budget doesn't have to be adopted until June 30th. So we are given assumptions in May for all schools to build our budgets, and that's what we've built our budget on, are those assumptions. So once June 30th comes and the actual state budget has been adopted, then school districts will have an opportunity at first interim to update for everything that actually was approved. So just keep that in mind that these are proposals. If you turn to page 3, this is a listing of all of the one-time state and federal funds that we have either already received or are proposed or estimated to receive. So for the school district, we are anticipating receipt of over $6 million. We've already spent about $2 million of that, and the rest of it will be spent between next year up until 2024. We will be making plans and bringing more information to you as things move forward. A lot of this money and the funding, we just found out about in the last three months of this year. And so we were required to show those monies as revenue in the 2021 year, and then we'll be carrying those over and spending them in the 21-22 and out years. The Keys to Learning Charter School actually is getting awarded $262,000, and of that, they've spent about $48,000 so far. If you turn to page 4, I brought this to you, I believe, at second interim. This is what they're calling ESER 3 funds. So we've already had ESER 1, ESER 2, this is ESER 3. And this is going to be about $3.2 million for our district. In order to spend those funds, they must fall within one of these 15 allowable uses. So we have to be very cognizant and mindful when we're making plans about how we're going to spend this $3.2 million. If you turn to page 5, these are some slides that were provided during the governor's May revision that I thought were important and wanted to share them with you. There's a proposal for a, in the May revision, to change the concentration fund. So you may recall that our district, due to our high poverty rate, we receive both supplemental and concentration funding. And right now, the concentration funding is about 50% of our LCFF funds, or it's calculated at 50%. They're suggesting that that be increased to 65% to help districts who are in high poverty areas. And for our district, that would mean an increase of about $350,000. The intent of this money is to increase the number of counselors, teachers, paraprofessionals, nurses, et cetera, that can serve students and develop deeper connections. So if this increase to concentration grant funding occurs, districts will be or may be required to have the governing board adopt a 45-day budget revision and a corresponding update to the LCAP and submit these documents to the county office for approval. So we may have to bring this back to you within 45 days. There has been some rumors and information coming that the legislature is actually pushing to have that percentage of concentration funds bumped up even higher than 65%. So that would be a good thing for us if that happens. So the impact on the multi-year projection with these proposals, the positive impacts is that we get the mega COLA, the 5.07%. The anticipation that the concentration grant could increase, and all of these one-time state and federal funds are really positive things for us, obviously, on our budget. So we also have to look at some of the negative impacts or things that negatively impact the budget. And that is the state unemployment insurance rate, which I'll talk about in more detail later. The state pension funds, which is PERS and STIRS, how those rates continue to increase, and we've not received any relief from the state for that. And then additional costs with just reopening. If you turn to page 6, one of the biggest assumptions we have to make is what will our enrollment and ADA look like next year? Due to COVID, we are in declining enrollment, and we don't know how many of those students are actually gonna come back or if they're going to stay away. So right now, obviously, the pandemic impacted learning in many ways, but perhaps the starkest example is the loss of K-12 students in 2021. Based on state data, the state's K-12 student population declined by more than 160,000 students this last year. That's a sharp contrast to the estimated loss of 20,000 to 30,000 annually. So at our district, we have seen that decline. The good news for school districts, however, is that the Hold Harmless provision that was enacted in 2021 provides a one-year safe harbor for ADA. So in 21-22, we will be funded on the higher ADA from 1920. So our 1920 ADA was 736 students. Right now, our actual ADA is only 713, but because of that Hold Harmless provision, we get to be funded on that higher amount. Unfortunately, the charter school will not be afforded the prior year guarantee and will be funded on their current year ADA, which is down. And so they will be looking at a loss of about $180,000 due to that decline in enrollment. If we were also to suffer the decline, our deficit would be about $230,000.
But that'll potentially catch up to us, though, correct?
What do you mean?
Because once they take away that guarantee and we're down to 700 students.
Exactly, and we'll talk about that. They call it the ADA cliff. If you turn the page, so this is where I wanted to talk just briefly about the Unemployment Insurance Fund. School employers participate in a joint pooled risk fund administered by the EDD. In March of 2021, the EDD submitted letters to all school districts notifying them that there would be an increase in the unemployment insurance rate from 0.05% to 1.23%. Now, recall that schools were prohibited from laying off employees in 2021, which begs to question what caused the significant rate increase. So if we couldn't lay off our staff, why are we being hit with this huge increase? So the report acknowledges the concerns and notes the EDD will be investigating paid claims for improper benefits, and any overpayments that were established and collected will be credited back to the fund. They're also telling us that this rate increase is only for one year, but we're sort of skeptical about that. So for Keys Union School District, the SUI cost will go from approximately $3,600 to over $89,000. That's an increase of $85,400 in one year. So I've had to budget that increased cost in this budget proposal. So when, again, in talks, because the state budget isn't finalized, the legislature is pushing back and saying that schools should not have to pay that increased rate. They're trying to get it to be reverted back to the 0.05%. So if that happens, then we'll get to add that $85,000 back into our budget, but for now, we had to budget it in just to be safe. Page 8, I just wanted to share this slide with you because I've always spoke about the average reserve level for school districts, and due to COVID, that average actually went from 17% all the way up to 22.7%. And that's because districts had to close early and suffered, you know, the impacts of shutting down schools, and so there was savings, and it dropped to the fund balance. So now, the average of 22.7% is for elementary school districts. And on page 11, these are the assumptions that we use for the budget adoption, and you'll notice highlighted in green that we have the funded Hold Harmless ADA of 736.2, where our actual ADA is 713. And you'll notice in yellow, that is where we will suffer this ADA cliff. So if we don't get those students back, we could have, you know, suffer the decreased funding for that. And then right below that is just a simple graph, and I just want to emphasize that our PERS and STIRS rates have almost tripled. And schools have just been expected to absorb these costs, and there's never been any relief from the state for those increased costs. And again, this is something that the legislature is trying to push back on the governor and say, "You need to help schools out with this."
I have a question about the ADA. Usually, if, I don't know the right terminology, but if our ADA drops, we can use last year's numbers?
Yes.
So what are they gonna use for this year's numbers for next year? Are they gonna use our actual ADA?
So you're asking me about 21-22?
No, 22-23.
22-23 is when we revert back, and that'll be the cliff.
That's the cliff.
To the 713 or to whatever we were this year?
To whatever you were this, this, this year.
Actual.
The actual this year.
Actual numbers.
It'll be the actual.
Okay.
Yes.
But it could go up, it could go down, we don't know, but we have to count.
We have a year to kind of see whether that does or not.
Hopefully, those homes are built and some families come in.
Yeah. But we can always use the last year's model, but since we're not really even using that year's model, that's why I wasn't sure what we get to use.
Right, but in 22-20, or 20, yeah, 22-23, we will suffer the cliff if we don't get those kids back. We don't get the higher of the prior year because that was a Hold Harmless year.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Stephanie, that cliff is approximately from what we have shared with individuals, about $500,000, so half a million dollars possibly.
Well, I'll talk about that.
Okay.
We're all ahead of you this, tonight.
So one thing I just want to emphasize is remember, there's a difference between ADA, which is what we're funded on, and enrollment.
Yeah.
So our enrollment is down 19, but our ADA is down 23. So just, if you hear two different numbers, remember, one's enrollment and one is ADA.
But those being close is really good.
I can't hear you.
Those being close is really good. Because that shows our students are going to school.
Yes. So if you turn to page 12, you can see that in 2021, we are actually down nine students already. And the projected 21-22 is going to decline another 19. And the way I'm projecting that is that I took our actual enrollment from March and April of this year, and that's what I'm projecting forward. So hopefully, we will get some of those kids back, but if we don't, our budget is based on the loss of those students.
Stephanie, so our budget is, when you create this, you're anticipating worst-case scenarios, then, right?
Yes. I try to be conservative without being out of the ballpark.
Thank you for that.
If you turn to page 14, this is just, for me, it looks really strange. For the rest of you, it probably just looks like normal columns of numbers. But the effect of the one-time dollars on revenues and expenditures is very stark this year. So for example, when you look at the first column, this is our estimated actuals of how I think we're gonna close out this current fiscal year. And you'll notice that the total revenues are $13 million. That's very high for us. And it's because we had to recognize those one-time dollars right before we're closing the end of this school year. And then you'll notice the next column over, that same total revenues goes down to $10.7 million. And that's because we're losing those one-time dollars. And the same thing happens when you look at the expenditures. So in June of '21, expenditures are estimated to be $11.6 million. But in the following year, the expenditures go way up because now we're having to spend those one-time dollars. So it looks out of whack, really, when you look at it. So we have revenues high in one year with expenditures low, and then revenues low and expenditures high. So it's kind of a mismatch, but that's the way we're required to post the revenue and the expenditures.
Are we able to pay things ahead of time, like three-year contracts and stuff with that one-time money?
So we're getting some really conflicting information. We're actually having to consult with the attorney because, for example, we're being told we could do, say, HVAC units for the classrooms, which those last for 20 or 30 years. But if we buy a shade structure and built a permanent shade structure, we would have to tear it down after three years.
So what's the difference between air conditioners?
Yeah, so they're saying, "Well, the government would never come and take an air conditioner away from you." Well, then, why would you come and take a shade structure away from us?
Yeah.
So there's just, it's, you know, it's the government.
Better get that money's worth on that new forklift.
Well, and so that's one of the things they're saying is that after three years, they call it disposition. They want to know what that forklift will be worth, and we potentially would have to buy it back with general fund dollars. So we want to avoid that at all costs.
They'll change it seven times before the next three months.
Yeah, so more to come.
Yep.
If you turn to page 15, so this is actually gonna show you, when you look at the change in funding over prior year and you look at the when you look at the change in funding over prior year and you look at the 2122 column, the $407,000, that increase of 407,500, that's due to COLA because we got that big COLA increase, right? Then when you look at the 2223 year, we're still getting another really significant COLA. It's not as high as the 5%, but we're having to take that hit on the ADA. So instead of having a positive or higher funding in the following year because of COLA, we're actually coming in $111,000 less because of that ADA hit. So again, if we get those kids, then we'll be, we'll have more, more funds over the prior year. So excluding all of the large one-time resources, our increase in funding is due to COLA, basically. If you turn to page 16, I made a little mistake and I forgot to take out the second interim report, but I slipped into your packets.
I noticed that when I was reading it.
Did you? Of course, I, I should have known you would notice that. So anyway, I've included the updated one in your packet. On page 17, this is my favorite little piece of information to share with you, which is our ending balances and reserves. So if you look at the 2122 beginning balance, it's estimated to be $6.3 million, which is just crazy. Normally, our fund balance is around 3 million. So that's really those one-time dollars sticking out there. We will have a projected ending fund balance of 3.9 million. And I, I really want to point out, so I'm, I'm kind of getting into the weeds here, but all of those one-time dollars probably won't be spent next year. We have the ability by law to spend those out until 2024. So it gives us plenty of time to have some mindful planning on what we're going to do with that money. But for me, I'm budgeting that we're spending all that money in that year so that we can see what our true fund balance would be. So I'm not carrying over any expected unspent funds. So you'll see that as we go through the interim reporting periods. So of that $3.9 million fund balance, we have our 9.5% reserve for economic uncertainties that we always have. We have our normal assignments for technology, maintenance, textbooks, transportation, et cetera. And so we have an unassigned fund balance of 10.3%. So overall, we have a reserve of 19.8%. So you may recall at last, at the second interim, we had a projected reserve of 27.6%, which was way too high, much too high. And so now we've gone through negotiations, we've made those settlements, and so our projected reserve will be 19.8%, which is now just slightly below average. Before, when it, when the average reserve was 17%, we would have been above average. So I'd just like to point that out.
Is there, is there, what's the benefit of being in that area? Why can't we be over?
Well, because what we're told is that area is a really good zone of protection. So if there were a crisis, if the stock market crashed, if things went crazy, we would have enough funds to pay our obligations and actually make payroll for about a month.
And if you have too much, you look like you're not spending the money right, correct?
Yeah, you don't want to have a reserve that's much, much too high because then what that means is you're not spending that year's dollars on that year's kids. So you, you know, it's a fine line between saving enough to have a cushion and spending what you're supposed to that year on those kids.
That's what I thought you meant.
So this is kind of the sweet spot where you want to stay. If you turn to page.
If all the schools raised their thing, then the sweet spot would change, correct?
Well, not necessarily. Because we're a small district, we're not subject to a cap on our reserve funds. If we were a little bit larger district, this next, this coming school year is going to be a trigger cap year, meaning that Turlock Unified, Series Unified, those larger districts, they are going to have a state-required cap on their reserve where they will not be able to exceed, I believe it's 10%. So we're really fortunate that we're not subject to that cap, that all the small school districts don't.
No, but what about their carryovers? Are they allowed to carryover for their, for their ESS stuff money?
Not sure how that works.
Yeah, let's see, I stumped you.
I would need a minute to think about that one.
If it wasn't COVID, me and Wes would high five it.
If you will turn to page 18, this is showing our historical fund balance, which again, looks really wacky because of these one-time funds. So you're seeing the dark blue line shoots way up to $6.3 million. And that's the effects of the one-time dollars. And then in 2122, it's projected to be 3.9%. So we're bringing that back down. We're assuming that we've spent all that one-time money and so then we would have a normalized fund balance. If you turn to page 19, this is our multi-year projection for 2122 through 2324. And we are definitely deficit spending and that's due to those one-time funds. But you'll notice at the bottom, the available reserves in 2122, we have 19.85%. The next year, it goes up a little bit at 21.23% and the third out year is 19%. And remember, these are not a projection, these are just assumptions based on what we know today. And so by looking at this, you should be able to see that our district is still looking very healthy.
But projections, assumptions, the same thing, isn't it?
No, it's actually not. So we're not forecasting, this isn't a forecast saying we are going to end up here in three years. What this is saying is that based on what we know today, and keep in mind that these, the assumptions that were given change throughout the year and they change every year. So we can only take what we know in this snapshot in time and, and project it out over three years and say, this is where we think we would be if nothing changed.
Gotcha, makes sense.
Okay.
Wow, actually, that makes sense. I love it.
So it's not a prediction. I'm not predicting that's where we'll be in three years.
Della, you chose the wrong night to stay.
This is your torture. If you turn to page 21, now we've moved on to the charter school. We have their estimated actuals, how they're going to close this year and what we're assuming they're going to close next year based on this budget. And so because they do not have the protection of that ADA hold harmless, their revenues are going to be down for the budget year, which is 2122. So they are projected to deficit spend about $151,000, which is not horrible, but they are deficit spending. They'll still have all of their reserves intact. So it's, it's not a horrible thing, it's just that unfortunately, they don't have that protection. So hopefully their enrollment will increase this year and then their funding will go up. So we'll keep an eye on that for sure. If you flip to page 22. This, I didn't hear that.
He said he doesn't want to repo one of those classrooms.
No, we don't want to, we don't want to do that. On page 22, just showing their historical fund balance, again, it's looking very flat, very healthy. That's a good thing. And this is based on declining enrollment, so that's good. And on page 23, the 2122 projected enrollment is 324. And that again, is based on just this last April, what their actual enrollment was. So hopefully they'll gain some students between then and the start of school. That would be fantastic. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions since we bombarded already with questions? All right, so we're going to close the, the public hearing at 6:45? It's one of your longer budget talks. Because we made it longer. We knew Della was waiting, so we wanted to drag her meet, her last one out. All right, moving on, 10.5 Public Hearing of Discovery Education Science. We'll open that at 6:45?
So what we are looking at is the purchase of new science curriculum. And so when we do so, anytime we're adopting a curriculum, we allow for the public to make a comment on or to inquire upon those materials. We will then, if, if none here tonight, then we will bring it to the board for formal approval. And that's Discovery, I think all of you have seen Discovery Education and, and Discovery Channel, all of that. They're all kind of part of that. And, and we feel that the materials are those that are most aligned with what the state has requested us to have and that they are engaging to all students. We've piloted, we piloted different sets of, of curriculum. Some was very difficult, both for teachers and for students to use. So we feel that this is the best option and so we're recommending that we go with that.
Do we know what Turlock's using?
They are using Discovery. And so that was one of the considerations was that as a feeder school to the, the high school, we wanted to make sure that our kids were getting the same curriculum so that it's not a shock when they get there that the materials are similar and that it, there's a smooth transition.
I think it's also important to, to do it even if they move in third grade. You know, like, that's, it's a, all right. Anything else from the public? Anything from the board? All right, we'll close at 6:47? Moving on to 10.6 Approval Hazel Student Medical Services? That's the one I had a lot of questions on.
And I'm going to ask that if the board would remove or, or entertain postponing this until the June 22nd. I have checked with the charter, the charter is not interested. So we are now then inquiring then based on our enrollment at just the, the middle school and the elementary school, what would that per student cost be? One of the very difficult things that I'm finding with this is it's, we're being charged the co-pay, whether it be $15 or $20, whatever it is, per student. But if the student doesn't use it, then that co-pay still gets paid to this company. So it, it's a hard thing to do to, to spend those funds when, if perhaps all we have are five or 10 that actually take advantage of it or use it. So is this really the best use of our funds? So I, I still have some questions that I'd like answered back from them before I feel comfortable with asking you to make a decision on it. I was hoping that we would have gotten it back, we didn't in time. So if the board would, would please go ahead and postpone on making a decision.
I do have a question before we table it. Is this something we might want to look at to wait until after school opens and take a survey of the parents?
And, and that is absolutely, actually, that's been suggested and, and that would be something. It would be to kind of assure parents that, hey, this is what it is. Would you use it? Would you not use it? I think the places that are using it are having great success. However, there is the, the added issue of personnel to actually sit with a student and be able to take the time to then use the iPad or the electronic device to then proceed with that. And I'm not so sure that we have that kind of staffing available. Again, without putting it in place and having an idea of how many would actually take advantage of it, it's hard to, to make that decision.
I think if we did a survey now, it's summertime, nobody's going to pay attention.
No, no.
So do we have a motion to table it for June 22nd and see where we go from there?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I, I think it should be, but let's just do it meeting by meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Jimmy to table till June 22nd meeting for more information. And could, could we have the nurse here when we do make that final? I have a first, I have a second. We've got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Yeah, I had so many questions on that, it was, it was an eye-opener. All right, moving on to 10.7 Approval of 2021, 2022 Delac recommendations. These numbers are getting harder to say every year.
Well, this is the District English Language Committee that meets and review the program that we have and then make their recommendations based on the data and on the testing and assessment of those students.
And are you happy with those recommendations?
I am.
All right, do we have any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a first? Do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
And just to add, those recommendations are needed in order for funding to, to be allocated because we have to have a plan as to what we're doing and whether it's working or not.
All right, moving on to 10.8 Approval of 2021, 2022 School Year Services of California Agreement for Services?
Yes, this is school services, which is basically the financial support and, and services that we, it's like belonging to a, a listserv, but also for documents, for support. And so we're asking that the board approve this. It's kind of a housekeeping item that we do every year.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to 10.9 Approval of Keys to Learning Charter 2021, 2022 Adnudity Contract.
So this is, it's unique to the charter, but it's a program that they use and we're asking that the board approve it for their charter year. And it's been decided not only with Rusty, but also with Jill in, in the know.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Do we have a first? Do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to 10.10 Approval of MOU between Keys Union School District and Raul Verduco and Stephanie Morris? Mr. Brazil?
Yes, this is an agreement that Ms. Morris will remain with the district for an additional year and postpone her retirement while in that time she works on training Raul Verduco as, as the possible next individual who would take on those duties at the end of the year if he's deemed qualified and ready to take on such. The MOU indicates how that decision would become, or, or come to be made. And we're asking that the board approve that, knowing the terms that are in the MOU.
All right, this has been, any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Have a first, I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, with that vote, I want to say thank you, Ms. Morris, for saving the district and good luck, Raul. Moving on to 10.11 Approval of Vehicle Service MOU between Turlock Unified School District and Keys Union School District for the buses?
This is an MOU or an agreement to have Turlock actually service our buses and do the inspections required for CHP. Because we are such a small district, we don't have our own transportation department per se that's able to do this. So my recommendation is that the, the board approve that.
Has Turlock always done it?
Last five years maybe?
Yes, for, since I've been here, but there are other people that, I know that some of the truck stop places also offer that sometimes. Sometimes they don't want to do the school districts.
We used to go through Salida.
Yeah.
But it was really far away, so I, they made it, I think, they made, they made a deal with Turlock and then it's been held up pretty well. We do use Houston for substitute bus drivers and buses, but Turlock's done really well so far.
In prior districts, we had store transportation actually did the, the contract service, so there are others.
It's a, it's a whole list of stuff they have to do. And actually, Salida was a big drain in the day of taking buses there and back.
No, we're very thankful that Turlock is willing to, to take us on and, and provide these services for us.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Do we have a first? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to 10.12 Approval Amendment Number Three to Agreement Number 10,833, whatever, between Keys Union School District and Stanislaus County Joint Use of Portable Buildings for Keys Union Branch Library.
Okay, so all of you heard my concerns with this at the last meeting. Since then, I had to kind of reach out again and continue to reach out to get just the, the one-page agreement for an extension of one year and also, also to secure an actual meeting date for next week for the individual administrative group from the Stanislaus Library to come out and discuss with us what our concerns are in terms of our responsibility for maintaining a building that is not really providing, we feel should be provided by the county and not from us since they are serving the community as a whole, not just our, our school. Again, I want to make it very clear that we are very, we want the library. It is not because we don't want it, we just want it to be a fair process of if repairs need to be made and the building needs to be up kept, we don't feel that that should be the sole responsibility of the district.
And it, like Mr. Brazil said, it's a very, very small agreement. It's 1,000% leaning towards their, their way.
I've seen the nice library, they have an empire.
That's, that was our concern. Turlock just did a full remodel, Empire did a brand-new build and we just want a little bit of upkeep done.
And I think I tried to keep everybody in, in the loop of the, the communications or at least giving you kind of a brief update every week on it. But, you know, again, most of the conversation has been our, our attempt to reach out. And, and I've felt the many times I've been, I've probably been a little pushy and rude because I, I want a response and I have deadlines and things to get agendas together and things. And they have not been as cooperative as I think they should be.
They felt once the agreement went out, it'd just go month to month and we would just forget about it.
I thought it was a community center.
No, it's.
It's a library, I know, I know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Now, but when I first seen it, I thought it was a community center. It's pretty big.
No, yeah, and Turlock just did a huge.
The ones that they did, yeah, yeah, yeah. They are, they're nice facilities.
But, um, yeah, if it wasn't for Brazil speaking up, then they would just hope the agreement just got skipped and month by month. And it's still weird how they respond to your emails, like our lawyers have to look into it. Well, you've had a, a whole year. All right, so we don't need, oh, we need to make a motion to approve the one year?
Yes.
And, and I would like it to be made with negotiations going on. So with the motion be made that there's currently negotiations going on with them. So that's on the minutes. So could I get a?
So I'll make a motion that we approve with ongoing negotiations?
Yeah, perfect. And do I have a second?
I second it.
Uh, who do you wanna give it to Dana?
Go to the referee.
Or no? Mike's got it. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. 10.13, approval of Certificate of Stipend Schedule to Reflect Substitute Teacher External Temporary Rate Up Pay to Extend Through 2021, 22. Make these shorter Dana, come on.
You're, you're seeing items on, you're seeing items on the agenda that would normally never be here, but the, all of these are COVID related. We came to you and we asked for an increase in our subpay through the end of this school year because we thought, okay, this, this will be enough and it'll get us through. Well, now every district in the county has continued and has continued for an additional year using some of their COVID funds to pay for that. So if we don't, then we, we already have trouble finding substitutes for our district if we don't continue for another year. But again, this is temporary for the year and, and you may see this again another year. I don't know.
Those COVID monies are there.
I'm worried because I think we have the largest number of teachers retiring in a very long time and we have a very few people entering the profession. And I think it's gonna get harder and harder for us to find subs. So my recommendation is that we, again, we're using COVID funds. This isn't, uh, it's one-time dollars for a one-time concern, um, we hope.
So our general fund covers the, the first original pay and then the COVID covers the, the extra, the overage?
Yes, correct.
Alright, if the other districts are doing it, we gotta do it. Do we have a motion to approve? We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.14, approval of CDE Local Agreement for Child Development Services, California State Preschool Program.
So this is our agreement in order to continue to provide services for our preschool, uh, program, which I am hoping that the board absolutely approves. I had the pleasure of attending, uh, the little graduation ceremony for, for all the preschool, the little ones this year and it really was just, I, I mean, they were so into it and they knew exactly what was expected of them. They had their, their cap and gown, or actually there were T-shirts and then their, their little cap on that they had all decorated. So, um, it was nice to see, uh, families and, and kids involved in, in being able to be out there. So I am as pleased this can be for us to continue to offer, uh, that program to, uh, students in, in the next coming year.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I second it.
Ooh, I'm gonna give that one to Mike again.
He's getting quicker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.15, approval of Resolution 21-22-01 Authorizing Agreement for Signatures for Contracts. Something we do every year.
Yep. Housekeeping, this is basically to approve the signatures of who cannot be authorized to sign on, on different, uh.
We have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have a first, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Jimmy got that second one off fast. Moving on to 10.16, approval of CSA Salary Schedule Range D Head Cook slash Baker Correction, uh, technical error?
Yes, so this has been before the board, but there was an error in it. And so we, in order to, obviously to be able to deal with it, we need to correct the error. So it, it, that's the only reason why it's here. It's.
See Della, all the problems you caused by leaving?
Correction.
And it is because the head cook or baker is not going to be a position we, we will continue to have. So that, that's what we're doing.
When Della goes, the job goes.
That's right.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the updated 10.17, approval of 2021 Summer School Rate of Pay?
Correct, and I had shared with the board what we were planning for summer school and so those rates, but in order for us to process payroll, we have to have proof that the board has approved those salary, um, proposals, uh, so that payroll can be processed through the county. So we're asking that you approve.
And we've known these numbers since we were planning from the, the get-go. So this.
Correct.
It's just, just.
Correct. It's just, this is just formalities of, of what has to happen. Yep.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve since it's already written?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.18, that's another one that was added. Approval of 2021-22 Food Service Program Agreement between KUSD and TUSD?
Yes, so this is the agreement for Turlock to be able to provide us with food services, so for, for breakfast, lunch, after-school, snacks, all of that kind of stuff. So we're asking that the board approve it. Um, and we're very thankful that they have been as supportive as, as they have been and their willingness to, to take us on this last year, particularly with all of the, um, meal and, and having to put them together and, and do that. They were as, absolutely very easy to deal with. They are wonderful staff that come out and, and support us. So we're, we're asking that the board approve.
Let's not give it to them too easy then.
And at the beginning of COVID, they actually sent their workers out and helped us.
Right.
They brought their workers, air conditioner van and they, they really, they stepped up. They didn't have to do, they could've just dropped the food on our doorstep.
Right, right.
But, uh, once we figured it out, they, they left. But they really wanted to make sure that the kids were serviced.
They'll be darned.
We were doing it right, safe and.
That's customer service right there.
Yeah, you know, we're representing them too by serving their food. So it's, it's.
Well, and our kids end up, you know, in there.
Well, it sounds like a win-win-win.
Yep. Yep. And we picked up the bus program about the same time we picked up the food program. Alright, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have a, first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to discussion items, LCAP. I can't believe you have anything to update on that.
I have absolutely no updates and I, and I'm gonna share that the, the continued, uh, feedback from the county has been periods in capital letters.
Someone needs. Someone needs to go back to school.
Yep.
Alright, moving on to 11.2, library lease. We've already talked about this, but did you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, just, uh, that, that again, I wanna. I believe on Thursday. I, I believe it is. Um, and so if, if board member, if you, I will send out the, the invite to remind if anyone is available and you wanna come, there is no problem with doing that. Again, I'm not by any means wanting to tick people off or to say we don't wanna have a library. We, it's the other way around. But I, I just want to make sure that we're not the only ones responsible for the upkeep of it. I, I don't think that's a fair.
I, I did see the county, some vans over there, three days in a row. I don't know what they were doing.
They might be getting ready to open.
Yeah, I think they are. I think that's what it is.
They were taking the books out, I seen.
I, I do wanna, I do wanna say the last time we negotiated, I think Eric and I gave them pretty hard, uh, truce and, uh, we thought that was gonna improve. So I think maybe Eric and I will go in pretty hard to get in on Thursday. Cause it's just the fact that not only are that, that library serving the community, they're serving outside community too.
Yeah.
And I've been here for years.
Yep. Alright, moving on to 11.3, COVID-19 Funding Priority List?
These, uh, we're going to continue to have committees meet and, and go over some of these, uh, funds. Obviously, uh, Stephanie just shared the SIR3, which is another, uh, a pot that's coming out for us to, to address. So these will, I'm, I, as I shared with Stephanie today, uh, I'm trying to get through June and July. And so when August comes, we have till 2024, but and when August comes and school is back, we're gonna have to hold some of these committees and talk about some plans of what we really want to do, given the guidelines of, and, and some of the, the fine line, uh, items that we may or may not be able to do. Because we will have to both check with legal counsel and also then write to CD or the California Department of Ed and actually get their written response of, are you approving this? Because we do not want to find ourselves in three years or in two years at a place where they say, give us the money back because you didn't use it correctly. Or you have to sell your stuff at the end of the three years, as Stephanie was sharing. So that's kind of, that's all that I have on that.
All I heard is you're taking summer off on the committees.
On committees.
Alright, moving on to board reports, 12.1. Mr. Brazil?
Okay, well, I shared that the enrollment in summer school was, uh, 145 and that may have actually increased a little this week. I, I did not ask, uh, let for an update today, uh, but I will by Friday. I wanna congratulate all of the graduates and the entire staff for their resiliency this past year. It was a true pleasure to attend all the different graduations and to take part in celebrating, uh, albeit with revised, uh, ceremonies. But the success of our students and staff were, were definitely at least in a better position than we were a year ago, uh, trying to, to celebrate those. The revised traditional school year is now over and I, I don't think I have ever been so happy to see the end of a school year and I mean that because of COVID, not anything else. I'm, I'm hopeful and optimistic that August we will be entering into a traditional school year without any of this, uh, uh, this chaos. The, uh, I, I had a pleasure to visit summer school classes yesterday and, uh, trustee Emmons is, as well. It was so nice to see the kids all engaged. Um, it is, they are all working on skills. It was very easy to see from one class to the next, exactly what kids were working on. They, the teachers are, are doing a great job with them. Kids are in, engaged and I think the fact that they see that there's, it's four weeks, guys, and we can do this and we're working on it. And I know that, uh, on Friday, we'll be back on campus to judge, uh, some, uh, door decorating contest. So there are some, some fun things for, for students to do as well, but the focus really is on the skills and hopefully getting them caught up. Uh, it, it's impossible to get caught up from, I, I believe everything, but we can, we're certainly glad to see that students are participating and doing well. Please keep in mind that we have a second board meeting on Tuesday morning, June 22nd. Uh, and this will be a morning meeting as, as we usually have, uh, with 7:00 AM closed session and then 7:30 regular. And that is for the approval of the LCAP and the budget. And it'll be at the, at the district office. We're hoping that, uh, on the 15th of June, we will have relaxed, if, if there aren't circumstances where the distancing is relaxed, we may have to have it in, at KES. I wanna congratulate all of our retirees and wish them all a blessed retirement and good health and in the company of family and friends. You will each be certainly missed. Enjoy your retirement and live life to the fullest is my advice to all of you. I also wish to thank those who are leaving us for personal reasons that I've already shared, that are relocating. We certainly appreciate you and you're a part of Keys and we hope that we will forever remain that. I also wanna thank our maintenance and operations staff and Eric for their hard work setting up for the end of the year activities. And just in the general keeping the facilities, uh, Jimmy and I, when we walked into classrooms, one of the things that we've noticed is these classrooms are incredibly well maintained and cleaned. And, um, it's just, you can see pride in, in, in the work and I, I'm appreciative of that. I'd also like to, uh, thank Cindy McDaniel's for her hard work in getting summer school organized and, and implemented. I know she had a lot of work to do with getting all the students assessed and, and getting, um, and she, I think, has made Mr. Murray's job as principal a little bit easier and easier to, to tackle. So I thank, uh, them. The roofing project is off to a great start here at KES and progress is made daily. They are working around kids. They're very professional. Things are kept clean and, and, and neat. We just heard, uh, we will more than likely have to write one more plan. That's why I really don't want to. For the SIR, uh, three funds. More details are still coming later on in the month. I, I mean, today we received basically emails that said, it's coming, it's coming. We don't know yet. So, um, LCAP and annual update are ready for your approval on the 22nd. And we've reached an agreement with CSA, the Keys Chapter today for the 2021 through 2024 contract. Uh, and that'll be before the board for formal approval at the next, uh, meeting. We've purchased a new food, uh, storage and delivery truck to, to support meal services, uh, with COVID, uh, funding. We have a meeting set up with the library, as I've already shared that, to talk about our years and, and to talk about future, uh, plans there. And we, uh, will also more than likely be coming up with a list of temporary positions, um, that, uh, based on the multiple plans that we have in place of, of saying we're hiring this person. All of these are temporary positions. We're hiring them because we need to meet the, the, the heart of the plan. But we also need to be honest with these individuals that these are not permanent positions. They, they are one-year in funding and, and dependent upon that. So we will, we don't have an August board meeting, so you may be seeing some things come across that I will, um, kind of share with you. Hey, here's our plan. Here's where we're going so that it's not a surprise. But again, positions will be temporary. None of them are, are, are long-term. And I wanna thank Stephanie, uh, for agreeing to stay on one more year, uh, and postponing her retirement. I know her husband is not happy and he would probably like to kick my you-know-what. Well, as sure we have a qualified person, uh, trained is, is our hope and we will do everything we can to do that. I wish everyone a wonderful summer break and August will be here before we know it. Um, thank you.
Alright, any questions? Alright, moving on to board member comments. Mr. Emmons?
Well, again, I wanna thank you retirees for all the work you do and dedication to the kids. No matter what position, it's all got to do with the kids. And I know that was what you all strive to do and you did a good job. We will miss you. And I will say, uh, walking through the summer school yesterday, or the other day, it was, uh, very quiet, clean. Every kid was alert and watching the teacher. It's almost like it was a setup. Because everything was just perfect. Every class, they were guests, you know, they were all quiet, doing their job. I've never seen anything like that.
Does the teacher have a ruler?
For summer school, it was very.
I think it was a setup Jimmy.
That was.
I think you gotta show up unexpected.
I think I went to summer school once and I don't think it was like that. But, uh, all the graduations, for such a terrible year, the graduations all turned out very well. And, uh, weather permitted, it was nice, just a cool breeze. All the graduations were, to me, went off without a hitch. That's, that was a lot of hard work.
Alright, moving on to Mr. Green?
Alright.
This is what you waited for, Della, so hold on.
Well, I couldn't resist. Uh, Della, I, I haven't had the pleasure of actually meeting you in person yet. But, but the minute, the minute Jeff announced your name and told me what you have helped us with in this district and our children, a little story came up in my mind, as little stories do often. And it was a story of my father who once said, and, and all this took place just in that three-second walk you walked. He said, "Son," he says, "there's owners and there's workers." He said, "In life, you're gonna decide what you're gonna be, an owner of something or you're gonna be a worker of something." He said, "Both, admirable positions." He said, "But you'll find out as you grow older." So I got older and I became a worker. And when you walked up there, the story that came to mind was my dad said, "You know, son, who would you rather know? Would you rather know the owner of the Coliseum or would you rather know the janitor?" And we were driving and I, I thought about it before I answered. I thought, you know, wow, that's kind of a random question. And I was young and I said, "You know, Dad, I, I'd rather, I'd probably rather know the owner." He said, "No, no, I don't think so, son." I said, "Why Dad?" He said, "Son, because the janitor has the keys to everything." And the owner rarely knows anything. And I thought about you as you walked up there and I thought, "There goes somebody that has the keys to every kid's heart." And, um, and from my heart, Della, to you, thank you for all your service. It means the world to me and I know it meant the world to every one of them kids for your effort. And I just wanna make sure you know that. Thank you, Della. With that said, Stephanie, you know, Stephanie, I wanna thank you for your amazing decision to help us this, this board sleep better at night, knowing that your decision that you made and how it impacts our, our community, our, our staff, how it impacts this district, our children. It's, I, I, Jimmy said it, but I just wanna reiterate with, with detail. You're an amazing person and when you get up there and talk, I completely understand what you say. I may not understand the detail of it, but the overview, I get it. And for that to happen is, is truly amazing. So you being an amazing person, an amazing speaker, I wanna thank you for your, I wanna thank you for you and what you do. So thank you, Stephanie. Thank you. I have one, I, I was gonna tell Rusty before he ran out. I was gonna, you know, it was important to me because I, I've seen Rusty in his eyes before where he wanted that school built so bad he could taste it. We've all been there. We've all wanted things so bad. Well, Rusty got it and I'm so happy that that happened. And I, I just wanted to publicly say, you know, Mr. Win, congratulations on that. And then, of course, John, John. I don't know if everybody knows John is, as well as, as I, I hope I do.
Who's John?
He's the guy in the back there in the blue. John has got to be, he's gotta be the kindest person that I know. I don't know if I know anyone kinder than John Stewart. I've had the honor of having spent some time with John and, um, every time I leave, I go, wow, man, he's such a nice man. And, and, and it's just on a hot, such a whole nother level of, of nice. And so I wanna say to you, John, I don't just feel that way, but I personally know children that have sent you to the clouds, John, in your kindness. So it's not just coming from me, it's coming from this community. We all wanna thank you, John Stewart. Thank you, my friend. Yes. And then to everyone, to everyone, thank you all. And I think that's it.
Alright, well, Mike, good luck topping that one.
It's a hard act to follow, Rusty.
No comment. Now I want to thank all the retirees that, you know, the dedication that you guys had put into this community, loving on the kids and being impact. Uh, you surely will be missed. Uh, unfortunately I didn't get to work with you as much. I'm new on the board. So thank you for your dedication. Thank you, Stefan, for staying on. And, uh, I'm sure we'll see some more difficulties, but, uh, we'll, we'll overcome and thank for your dedication.
All right. Jeff, Mr. Green?
I ditto Wes Group. But congratulations, guys. Enjoy life. Be young again. Go sit at the beach. That's what I would do. But congratulations.
Stephanie can't for another year though.
Well, yeah, you're stuck.
All right. I have a couple lists. Um. All the graduations went really well. Um, my favorite graduation was probably the charter school high school one. It was in the shade of the church.
Missed.
Um, it was very formal and that's where I saw the most parents were happy for the graduation, I think. And Mr. Brazil over here was Mr. Popular with some of the families.
We'll figure.
Are the ones with the letters?
No, he really, uh, we did, we did the exit exam for the 12th graders. So a couple of board members in L U went and we, we got to like interview a couple of students and he just had two groupies that loved him. And even the parents came and talked to him. And so I'm just standing there like, okay, okay. But, um, it was, it was windy at all the graduations, but that one was windy in the shade with the palm trees. And it was just like, I paid more attention to the, to the area than, it was just really, it was, when I, when Jimmy and I showed up, we're like, hey, there's no stage, there's no nothing. But it would have been ruined with the stage. It would have been ruined with the roof. It was just, and I'm glad that they took it back to where they wanted to take it.
It was good.
Um.
That was the high school one?
Yeah. It was, we were told there was like a stage or, we were told there was a stage or something and there wasn't, but it was, it was perfect. It was in a huge shade of the building and an oak tree. And it was all the space you can have, but it was 100% shaded. Uh, everybody kept to their selves, but was very happy. And they were, watching the parents was rewarding. Hon- honestly, it was.
Well, Jeff, that's why the simplest things in life bring the most joy.
Yeah. But I, it just, like Jimmy said, with this rough year, it was really good to have graduations, especially, you know, last year's graduations were minimal or none. But, um, I believe that every student got the best that they possibly could in a, in a graduation. I really believe that. Um, and I, and I just felt like the charter school families, like they just recognized it a little bit more than, than, maybe I just paid more attention, you know, like. Um.
Did you see the kids?
Yeah, I saw some.
Okay.
But there was a good black lab there too. So. And then, uh, the retirees, good luck. Enjoy. Um, I'm, I'm gonna say ditto with what Wes says. Wes looks behind people and sees what they're, who they really are, even in three seconds. And, uh, you, you nailed Della perfectly.
Right.
Um, Jimmy and I were gonna need some help making those mashed potatoes next year, Della.
I want the buns.
Uh huh. But, um, really we could talk all day about the retirees, but again, I'll say is if you, if you're lucky enough to retire here and especially with the way this board has held up all these years, it's, you're retiring here because you're here for the students. You know, I don't think this board has ever caused negative issues where you don't want to work here. The teachers that do leave, honestly, they're the ones that are leaving because their home issues, moving, promotions, you know, stuff like that. We, it's, it's a good place to work and retiring here proves it. So, um, summer school, I'm glad summer school's going well. I think that's gonna be tough for the kids, but I'm glad they faked it for Jimmy.
Well, they did.
Yeah, I gotta, the kids I have, pal, they're excited about summer school.
They are.
Yeah.
No surprise about that.
Well, maybe every 10 years we need to shut school down for a little bit and get them kids motivated.
Um, I, I did was, I was able to walk around last day of school and, uh, pop my head in all the doors. I didn't go into the classrooms, but I just said, you know, thanks to the kids for coming back and it was important that they came back. Um, and it was a really happy last day, honestly. It wasn't sad. In years past, the last day of school's kind of sad, but it was really happy. I think everybody just really enjoyed.
I came at a different time. I came when the fifth graders were crying. They had to leave it on.
That's because you came there, Tim.
What the heck?
When I walked into the fifth grade classes, they were getting books read to them on the last day of school. But, uh, again, we probably saw it different times, but these kids were really happy to be there and the teachers were happy too. Um, Stephanie, I appreciate you staying on. When you called me and let me know you're retiring, I told you what, you need to stay and that wasn't good enough, but you just did it anyways. We could have solved this months ago if you listened to me or, or L U. Uh, Raul, good luck. We're, we're cheering on for you. Anything you need from the board list? No? Um, and then moving, uh, don't know what that means. So I think I'm done. Going on to the next, oh, I know what it is. Uh, tempor- temporary positions. This board has always taken layoffs very, very hard. So please, when we hire these temporary people, let it be known that this is temporary because when it comes to those, as a board, we have to just do what we have to do and, and.
At least they'll give them experience.
Yeah. Hopefully, you know, things change and stuff like that, but we, as a board, we need, we need to know that we're, they're temporary employees. And so.
It kind of goes against the grain, I would imagine though, right?
Temporary. Nobody liked the word temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a hard sell.
Sure.
When, when you are trying to tell someone, you know, we want you, you're the best qualified and we want you, but we only want you for this length of time, you know, and there's no hope for after that. And, and I think that that's, however, that's the reality